I'm going to ask you to show it over in my report. I'm going to ask her a report on what's happened since we've changed the laws on this year.
Okay.
At the next meeting.
You bet. Car thefts has dramatically gone down.
I know. I'm going to bring that up tonight.
Yeah, very good.
You can tell us. There's nothing on Facebook anymore.
I know. Exactly.
Tomorrow's for birthdays.
Who's?
Maybes.
Oh, that's right. I saw that. Okay. I'm just going to start.
Have you signed it? Amy for Amy.
Who?
Amy Glanman.
Yes.
Yeah, and I remembered that. I just can't remember what date it is today.
Good evening and welcome to the Federal Way City Council Special Meeting for August 13th, 2024. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to this very special meeting of the Federal Way City Council. We are here to hear from our very hardworking and dedicated city commissioners as well as after that have a recognition that will involve a cake back there and so we will build in time for that. We also have an executive session before our city council meeting at 6:30. Estimated duration for that, which I'll announce when we recess for that purpose, is about 25 minutes. So we should, right now, we have just a few minutes after about 5:02 right now, we should give ourselves, I would say, about 45 minutes for this meeting and then allow council to and then we've got the reception and then we need a few minutes to prepare for the next city council meeting. Okay, so the way we've done this is each commission is allocated five minutes. We've got, like I said, very hardworking commissions, but this August is August and we understand that people are out and about and working on having some relaxation and fun as well. So first, we have the Arts Commission and the individuals that are identified as being present with one speaking representative of Karen Brigado, who's the vice chair. We've got the chair, Vicki Chenoweth here. Great to see you, Vicki. Janine Barber, is it Iveta Falsenberg, Mirna Pacas, Kenny Byrne, if I mispronounce your name, I'm sorry, I'm just doing it. They should teach cursive in school, continue to do that. I was just talking to my son about that. Unfortunately, I'm having trouble reading cursive. So Mirna Pacas, Kenny Byrne, Kim Bowman, Joan Murphy, and Tracy Palumbo. With that, Karen, our vice chair of the Arts Commission, the floor is yours for a full five minutes.
So we're going to change things up because that's how people in the Arts Commission like to do things. So I'm Vicki Chenoweth, the chair of the Federal Way Arts Commission, and I just wanted to say a few words and then I'll introduce Karen, but I just wanted to say hello to the mayor, the esteemed city council members, and thank you so much for recognizing all of us today. And I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude for your unwavering support for and commitment to the Arts Commission. The dedication and vibrant is to the vibrant community has been instrumental in enriching the cultural fabric of our city. The Arts Explosion, we had our second annual Arts Explosion this year, and it is one of the programs that has flourished under your guidance and support. And it was not only provided a platform for local artists to showcase their talents, but also brought joy and inspiration to the countless residents. We are deeply appreciative of your efforts in supporting us. The Arts Commission currently has a call-out to artists for the September Arts Alive competition and traffic graphics. The traffic graphics is an ongoing call-out to artists. It's year-round. We have three traffic graphics per year, and that is the panels or the utility panels next to streetlights. And so you can go to our website at federalway.gov/pageartscommission, and on there you can see the call-out for artists for the traffic graphics, and there is a small stipend for that for the artists and their art. And it will give you the, it gives the dimensions of each of the boxes to help the artists. And also, the Arts Tent at Red, White &amp; Blues Festival every year is a big hit, and that cannot, we couldn't pull that off without the help from the, from the community center and their staff members because that is, there's a lot of kids that go through there every year. And then another one of our great programs is the Summer Sounds Concert Series, and that's every Wednesday at Steel Lake Park, and that's, people look forward to that every year, and so that's another one of the great programs that the Arts Commission does. And I want to give a special thanks out to the Parks and Recreation Community Center staff members, Kevin Hutchinson, Cassie Swan, Abby Wenick, and Ashria Guptur, as they work tirelessly in helping the Arts Commission and ensure that our events run smoothly, and without those people, we would really struggle with that as well. And then now I would like to introduce Karen Brigado, our chair, vice chair.
All right, thank you. Karen?
I don't know how much time I have left, city council and mayor. I'd like to-
Let's pause the timer.
Okay.
How much, how much time?
Two minutes.
Can you increase that to three? Just make it through.
Good. I'm used to speaking in three. Yay, okay. I'd like to thank-
She's going to need it.
No. Oh, sorry, my glasses. I'd like to thank each of you. You serve the citizens of Federal Way, and you also serve all the volunteers that are here too. By supporting the commissions, you serve everybody here. Thank you so much. It's greatly appreciated. And by serving the commission, you also wish to cultivate culture. You value artistic expression. You know the importance of art in Federal Way, and we appreciate your support of all of our programs. Vicki has gone over a lot of those programs, but I just learned that, well, we didn't, the Contracts for Services has been changed. It's now called Federal Way Arts Grants, which is basically what it is. You will be voting tonight on new MOUs with some of our resident arts groups. I hope that's voted favorably. It's going to give them significant amount of funds that they never had before. That shows your support of arts and the artistic expression. We also have the Program of Arts in the Courts, What Freedom Means to Me, since we are very diverse, there's a lot of meanings to that. And each of those artists are displayed down on the courts. Of course, you know, the Arts Alive Program, the Arts Explosion Arts Festival, that's our signature event, the Asphalt Program, which includes traffic graphics, mural art, crosswalk art, storm drain art, manhole art. We can include a lot of different things under that. And also, we have the Artist in Residence Programs. And of course, it was up to us to form this joint commission meeting. We had our first, this is our first meeting, formal meeting, and I have to thank you. If it wasn't, well, I know we had a pandemic and it was very bad, but it brought us ARPA funds. Without those ARPA funds, we would not have a lot of the programs that I just outlined to you. We're working on our goals, and we thank you for that. We've got a lot of goals in our future that we will obtain, and we are hoping that you have those goals as well in mind. You serve toward the citizens here that are here today, and we thank you from the bottom of our heart. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Great job. Thank you for your service. Okay. Okay, next, we're going to hear from the Human Services Commission. We've had Betty Taylor here. And before Betty comes up, is there anybody else from the arts, from, excuse me, from the Human Services Commission that wanted to talk to figure out how we allocate that time? Otherwise, Betty's going to get all five. All right, Betty, come on down. Let's do this.
Good evening. My name is Betty Taylor. I was, I was, I was looking online and I was looking, I hope you guys can hear me. I was looking online and I was doing some research about the Human Service Commission, and I happened to look in the chapter 255, which basically talks about the Human Service Commission and how it was created. The Human Service Commission is hereby created. The commission shall serve in advisory capacity to the city council and make recommendations on matters including but not limited to the planning and funding of behavioral health, community services, preventive services, and senior services, membership and appointment. The Human Services Commission shall consist of up to nine regular members and up to three alternative members appointed by the city council. Commission members shall serve without compensation. Each member shall serve a term of three years. City councils shall annually appoint new members to fill the expiring terms on the Human Service Commission. If for any reason a vacancy occurs during the term of the Human Service Commission member, the city council will, shall appoint a new member to fill that, an expired term of that member. The city council may remove a Human Service Commission member at any time if the city council determines that member is not fulfilling his or her responsibilities to the satisfaction of the city council. I'm reading this because I've never read it before, and I think it's really important to know. Persons appointed to serve on the Human Service Commission shall reside within the corporate limits of the city to the extent practicable. Appointments shall reflect the balance of the range of human services, delivery interests in the community. Each member has the responsibility to disclose, to disclose any actual potential conflicts of interest prior to be appointed and as they may arise at any time after. The Human Service Commission shall elect a chair and vice chair from among its voting members. Such officers shall hold office for one year. The mayor shall appoint appropriate staff to assist the Human Service Commission in preparing reports and records and performing other functions as may be necessary for the proper operation of the commission. I hope I'm not boring anyone. This is not boring to me. It's really important. The Human Service Commission shall operate in accordance with the duly adopted bylaws. The commission shall provide the city clerk with a copy of current bylaws, which shall be maintained as part of the city official public record, and shall provide an updated copy to the clerk whenever amendments are appointed. The Human Service Commission shall meet at least once per quarter. All meetings shall be open, open public meetings, and the commission shall keep a written record of its proceedings, which shall be public record, all in accordance with state law. So it goes on to talk about, it has different points. Civil stability and decorum shall be observed by commission members and attendees and shall be enforced by the chair. Talks about appointed members. It talks about alternate commissions. Talks about the duties and responsibilities. The Human Service Commission shall make reports and recommendations to the city council concerning human service issues, including but not limited to the following responsibilities. Review the status of and make recommendations on the development of human service programs in the city. Provide recommendations on the priorities of human services needs within the city. Review and make recommendations on funding requests regarding human services submitted to the city. Assess the performance of individual human service organizations and agencies within the city. Analyze city actions which may affect the availability and quality of human service provisions in the city. I got this in a minute. Coordinate with other groups and human service planning agencies and organizations. Do we do this? I'm like, do we do this? Do we do this? I'm reading through this, and as I'm reading through this, I'm like, what of these do we do? Do we do them all? Do we do some? Anyway, I, my recommend, I recommend that before anyone ever is ever appointed to a commission, that they each get a, make sure that they get a copy of what the commission is for, what their duties are for. It will help them to do their job more better, and it will help them to be a better citizen and a better community member. So that's my, I would like to see that happen on future candidates.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, now we are on to the Senior Advisory Commission. The following individuals are present. Lana Bostic, Catherine North, Frank Fields, Kenneth Platt, Cheryl Volheim, Vicki Foreman, and Debbie Harvey, and Lana Bostic is the designated speaker. So come on up.
Good evening, council members. The Senior Advisory Commission was established in 2019 to improve and enrich the lives of seniors in the community, and over the last five years, we believe that we have done just that. From the creation of a resource guide that is produced annually, to the Senior Health and Resource Fair held at the PAC, to Senior Commission Connection Events at the Community Center, we are a commission that is active and involved with changing the circumstances for seniors in Federal Way. As we take an opportunity to share with you tonight, first, we want to thank you for the chance to speak. We have compiled our thoughts together into this statement. We are a working commission with our sights set on the next generation of seniors in Federal Way. The goal is to make sure that they have a community where they can not only live and shop, but thrive. One of the things that it will take to create that vibrant senior committee, excuse me, communities is increasing senior programming. One of the ways we believe this can be done is through the building and creation of senior center in Federal Way with easy access for all seniors. We would like to make sure that seniors are not left out of the conversation when it comes to development and imagining of Federal Way. In addition, we request that funding for senior programming be increased in the upcoming budget conversations and deliberations. We can see David Schmidt at the Community Center. He's the senior director of senior services, working so hard, but in the Andy, it's only one person, and for growth in the senior programming at the Community Center to be had, additional funding and employees will be needed. Seniors are a vulnerable population that make up almost 20% of the community of Federal Way. With increased support at the city level, seniors would be more readily woven into the fabric of Federal Way through education on senior scamming and basic computer skills, access to affordable housing, food, and medical care, and working collaboratively with our surrounding cities such as Auburn, Des Moines, Kent, and Tacoma to build cross-community senior programming. As we go into budget deliberation, the Senior Advisory Commission requests a continuation of the $5,000 annual allocation that it was originally set in 2023. This funding goes towards commission expenses for the community, including the senior outreach events and brochures. Thank you again to the Steel Lake Presbyterian Church for continually sponsoring this. We thank the mayor and the city council for their continued support of the Senior Advisory Commission. We would also like to invite everyone to join us at the Senior Advisory Commission meetings on the second Wednesday of the month at 2:00 PM in the Hilebos Room here. Thank you, and don't we look good in our shirts together?
Absolutely.
So I still have two minutes.
I just have probably a minute. I just want to take this moment to just say the city commissioners, I think some that Lana's already mentioned, their policy recommendations and actions can have a direct impact on our residents and quality of life. And so two of the things that we've talked about, we're proud of, that we've been successful are the resource guides and our Health and Resource Fair. We've also been very proud of the accomplishments we've been successful in partnering with Steel Lake Presbyterian Church in providing lunches for seniors once a month, and once it's co-sponsored by the senior commission. Also, wanted to just say some feedback from our senior citizens. We've had nothing but positive feedback on any of the programs that we've provided, the free lunches, the Health Resource Fair, all been positive feedback. So in closing, my vision for the future is a good social program for seniors to continue to have guest speakers and share knowledge on current topics. I just want to say it's been a privilege to be a volunteer for the City of Federal Way, and also that we have a great group of commissioners that we have met, and we work well together, and we hope to continue that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, I see members of the Diversity Commission present, including the chair. Come on up, members of the Diversity Commission. And we've got up to five minutes.
Oh, I will not be taking five minutes. I appreciate a microphone, but not today. First of all, I want to say thank you very much to my fellow commissioners. I know not everyone was able to come today at such early notice. The first thing I want to say is thank you for everyone that came out on Saturday. When people hear the Diversity Commission, they hear diversity, equity, inclusion. There's always sort of feelings around the words. But what you should feel is what we felt on Saturday, which was community. Individuals from the nonprofit world, individuals from both sides of the political world, individuals just simply wanting to be together. When there was a child that was lost, nobody asked what race you were, what religion you were. Everybody stopped what they were doing to find the parents. When one of our community members got a little overheated, no one stopped to ask what side of the aisle that they sat on. Instead, everybody got together, and even before the fire, the fire just could get there. It was the community that rallied around this individual. That is what this commission is about. This commission is about community coming together. We already know we're one of the most diverse communities in the, in the nation. How can we be inclusive? How can we have more food trucks? I don't know about you, but who knew corn dogs and cheese belonged together, right? Who, who, I didn't know that that was a thing, right? One of the, the most important things for me that happened is I was able to sit with a young man, Mateo, who's part of the summer program here. He's entered the transfer portal and be heading to the East Coast for school wrestling. His goal is to stand on the Olympic podium. That's a kid from Federal Way, a Filipino kid, standing up in Federal Way. So in 2028, I hope, as we're sitting out there at the park at our celebration, we'll all be rooting him on, because that is what this commission is about. This commission is about us coming together as a community, making sure our seniors have a good time when they come out, making sure the Arts Explosion, making sure that we're represented on that dais, making sure that the interests of all of our communities are represented, making sure that we can all push about the noise and come together. So I want to say thank you all for Saturday. I look forward to continuing with this process and continue with this commission, and thank you for allowing me to serve as chair.
Thank you, Chair Abdullah. Is there anyone else with the Diversity Commission who would like to say a few words? Or do we have any more?
I just want to share a few. I just want to share our mission statement.
Yeah.
Because I think it's important that we all hear our mission statement and understand what we're tasked to do as a commission. So our, our current mission statement is to enrich the lives of all people who live, work, and play in Federal Way by advising and guiding city government with an equity lens on policies, procedures, practices, and current emerging issues. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Trinise.
Hi, my name is Chica Unijaka, and just like-
Recording in progress.
Just like our chair said, she said it all. I was so excited. I've been going for, for how many years now? I think last Saturday was exceptional. And in future, we would like to see more trucks, food trucks. Like, somebody was asking me about, how come we didn't see anything from Africa? Jello fries, fufu, but next year, believing God, we will provide that, and we'll have more, more diversity food and all that stuff. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, hi, my name's Craig Patrick, and I've been recently appointed to Diversity Commission, and I'm really excited about being on the commission, and I see a lot of positive things coming to light now and moving forward. I think it's important that we just keep moving forward, not to go backwards or get mired down in the past, and kind of keep promoting things the way, the way the Diversity Commission can come to an agreement on things. It's really inspiring. I wish more people would show up to the commission meetings to kind of see what we do talk about, how things are brought up, how, how we interact, and our chair runs a great meeting. She, she really runs a good meeting, and I'm happy about that. I'm very thankful for being on the commission. I'm very, I have a lot of gratitude for being there. I know it's a, it's a, it's an honor to be on there. It's not a, a rite or a, an ideology. It's just, I'm very happy to be there for where I'm at right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I hope, yeah, so my name is Jennifer Kiro, and I'm so thankful for people entrusting me in this position. My thing here is we are hoping to have more young people so that, you know, more young, more people coming through. On Saturday, most of the people were asking like, you know, how do you join? How is, one more minute?
Of course, yeah.
Okay. So they're kind of asking like, how do you go about it and stuff like that? And so we, we kind of felt like more information needs to be pushed out. I don't know, probably marketing, talking to people out there so they understand and know what's going on so that next time, or probably next year, we have more people coming through. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, we've got now the arts, excuse me, we already did arts, Parks and Recreation Commission. We have the following individuals, George Vodino, Karen Brigado, our vice chair, Jerry Knudsen, Dave Berger, Mike Campsmith, Rena Ross, and Monty Stewart, and Karen Brigado is their spokesperson. Karen?
Hi, city council. It's not deja vu, I'm here again, representing the Parks Commission. George Vodino would be here, but he's working tonight. He instructed me to say these words. The Parks and Rec Commission, we thank you for all of your hard work. We thank you for having this joint commission meeting this afternoon. We believe in sharing calendars, sharing resources, and sharing our work plans with everybody. Just this year, the Parks and Rec Commission has been working towards a new master plan for Brook Lake Park, Steel Lake Park, which is our most loved park. We have informational sessions on the Federal Way Community Center, which is interesting. Renovations on there are ongoing. It looks like Art Deco in the bathrooms. The new Hanruwi Park that's over by the Aquatic Center, that'll be planted in the fall. The annual playground equipment replacement and trail repairs, the recreation open space planning. Of course, we always have Parks Day, a chance for volunteers to help with the parks. We're happy to announce a new program. If we have city approval, it's called the Wind Phone. It's a therapeutic wind phone, an actual rotary phone out in the wilderness. You go and you're able to talk, it's not hooked up, but you're able to talk to past loved ones. It's therapeutic, it's very popular over in Japan. It's just a way to connect with your loved ones. There'll be tears, that's why we want it out away. Another thing that is soon to be approved is a new work plan item. We are going to be blending art and the parks, called Art in the Parks. Along the BPA Trail, you might have noticed, there's a lot of fencing, and the fencing gets tagged, and the tag, the tags get covered up with beige, and it's all different shades of beige. So, and one of the Parks Commissioners came up with the idea, let's put art on it in- So, and one of the Parks Commissioners came up with the idea, let's put art on it instead, which is a great idea. It wasn't me. The artist has been found, he has a big paint by number. We can encourage the kids in the Boys and Girls Club, progress pushers, Phenomenal She, Select Classroom, anyone to paint. They could use spray paint, regular paint. It's a way to blend art in the parks, two commissions together. Isn't that why we're here today? Blending two together. The arts can blend with diversity, we can blend with everybody. We thank you for having this, for honoring all the council members here today. You work hard in servicing the public, we are the public, and we thank you. Thanks.
Are there any other, that's what I have for filled out forms. I see the former, oh, youth commission, come on up. Bud, I see a representative of the planning commission. Bud, did you want to address the group as well? Okay.
He can go first.
Oh, no, no, please, I have to go. You want to be, okay, let's do that. Bud, let's go ahead and, I think he wants to go last, right? Come on down. And do we have representatives from Steel Lake as well? Okay.
My name's Lawson Bronson, I'm a member of the planning commission and have been for at least ten or fifteen years. One of the things that we would appreciate as a planning commission is more public participation. Several years ago, you will recall that we had an interesting evolution when Warehouser moved out and new one moved in, and there was all sorts of discussion about what was going to go on over all of that. And after listening to this for about forty-five minutes, I got up and introduced myself, and I said, folks, all of these concerns that you have about regulations and rules and all like that are under the guise of the planning commission. Please come, tell us what you want us to do. There's only seven of us, and we try to serve you as best we can, but there are a lot of things that others of you have to say that would really be helpful. For you folks, thank you for your service. I know the pay is fantastic, but thank you.
Okay, so I'm another member of the planning commission. My name is Anna Patrick, and I would just like to say I'm really enjoying being on the planning commission, being able to serve that way, and learned a lot, still learning a lot. Just learned what a cornice is, or what it's called. And so what we're working on right now is a lot of the comprehensive plan, and so be sure to go on, engage Federal Way and comment on, look at everything there and comment, take a look at everything. This is your chance to comment. And a lot of what we're dealing with now is too, is state law and what's required of us here as a city, and it's taking a lot of work. We've put quite a bit of time into it. I really appreciate the staff answering all of our questions and putting in all of the time to help us work through all of that.
Hello, Vicki Chenoweth, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. I just want to also talk about what Commissioner Lawson spoke about. You know, we do get a lot of people complaining and naysayers, but we don't see anybody, hardly anyone, coming to the meetings, and they are the first and the third Wednesday of each month at 5:00 PM. So when you see announcements or you have questions about what's going on in the city, we would encourage everyone to come to the planning commission, and thank you again.
All right, we've got our representatives from Steel Lake. Come on down. And while they're making their way up to the podium, is there anybody from any other commissions? Right, he wants to go last.
Hello, city council. I'm Margaret Rayner from the Steel Lake Management District, and I've had the opportunity to work with you for many, many years with the Lake Management District. Our Steel Lake Management District is working very hard to make sure that Steel Lake is a wonderful place for everybody in the community of Federal Way to come and enjoy it. Steel Lake Park is the jewel of Federal Way, and we feel very, very fortunate that we're there helping keep that park as a place for all of the residents of Federal Way to come. Thank you very much. And Melissa Hamilton is one of our newer members on the Steel Lake Management District. And Bruce Myers is behind her. There's four of us on the district.
Well, I wasn't prepared to speak, but in omnia paratus is what they say. So yes, I'm a newer member of the Steel Lake Management District. I was inspired to join the commission because of some problems we were having on the lake last year, and so hopefully we are doing the work to make this lake enjoyable for everyone, not just residents, but our community members. I do want to thank you all, Mayor Farrell and all of our city council members, city council president for the work you do here, and for appointing us to these positions. I also want to just honor our community. These are some of our model citizens sitting out here, and they're involved and they're making a difference in their community, and so I thank all of you and give yourselves a pat on the back for the work that you're doing.
Hi, my name's Bruce Myers. I've been a resident of Federal Way for forty-four years and probably spent forty-three years griping about problems that I see. This is the first year I've had a chance to be involved, and it's been a real eye-opener for me. You guys have been so supportive, and I just love to see the passion that's coming out in this group, and I really hope that more of our citizens get opportunities to participate the way I've been able to this year. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, before we call on Juan, any other commissions? Oh, actually, Vivian, did you want to say a few words? Which commission? Oh, come on, come on, yeah. I think we did, let's just go like a minute or two, because we did.
This will just take a second, and I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak since I came late, and I'll hear from Betty about that. So my name is Vivian Alexander, I'm grateful to serve on the Human Services Commission. I have one thing I would like to say to Mayor Farrell. Mayor Farrell, you came to our commission meeting when we were having a difficult time. So what I want to say is I want to thank you very much for your active listening skills. Because of that, I felt heard, I felt understood, and I felt respected. This is something that has to take place within our group as we sort through many things and go through all the applications, and you added to that, and for me, you calmed me, and again, it is active listening skills, so thank you.
Thank you, Vivian, appreciate it. I tell Wendy every day I'm working on it. All right, Juan.
Thank you.
And it's Juan, would you like to introduce your full name?
Juan Luis Fuentes Ramos, thank you. The reason why I wanted to wait last because I was still waiting for my vice chairwoman, but unfortunately she won't be able to make it today. But that doesn't mean I could have the full five minutes, so that's good. I want to thank Mayor Farrell, council president, Linda Coachmart, members of the council, members of the other commissions out here today who came. It's truly an honor to be here, it's truly an honor to be as a commissioner. I'm filled with gratitude and pride for the opportunity to serve in our city's youth commission for the past two years and the one year as this year as chairman. I had the privilege of working alongside dedicated individuals who share a passion of empowering our youth people. Sorry. Our time on the youth commission has been marked with meaningful, fun meetings, when I always like to talk about my, I always say my wife, but she's always just an artist, Caliuchis. But one stands out mostly was our senior send-off event at Steel Lake, which I would like to give a shout out to the Steel Lake management team, who gave us the approval for letting this event happen. Showcase the creativity and spirit of our graduating seniors. Custom-made lanterns crafted by our seniors themselves, illuminated by the lake, symbolizing their bright futures and the light they bring to our community. This event encapsures what the youth commission strives, for providing platforms for our young people to express themselves, connect with their community, and leave their mark on Federal Way. It demonstrates the power of bringing together our city's youth, their families, and local leaders to celebrate their achievements and foster a sense of belonging. I graduated this year at Thomas Jefferson High School, go Raiders. So that means, due to city ordinance, I must pass the torch as commissioner. Sorry, I was trying to cry. As I plan to pass the torch to hopefully the next chairwoman, I am confident that the commission will continue to amplify youth voices and create opportunities for meaningful The future of Federal Way is very bright, thanks to the passionate young leaders engaging in our community, and I must give credit to myself because I am one of those passionate young leaders. To my fellow commissioners, Malia, Sayana, myself, Sutender, Mary, Acita, Winston, Sarah, Charis, and Walter, to city staff and all who have supported our efforts, thank you. Your dedication to neuterize the potential of our youth is commendable. To the city council, especially to Jack Walsh and Paul McDaniel, who have came to our meetings before, I encourage other council members and the mayor to come to our meetings. Thank you for your continued support to the youth commission and its activities. I wanted to mention about a few things that I wish could be helped for next year's commissions is more support from financial-wise. I've been working hard with Santa de la Raza to get donations for a scholarship, as the youth commission is very broke, and we want to have this scholarship that provides a family, a family in Federal Way, a full year of membership in this community center, as well as, I want to really want to work with next year with the members of the city council, a parade, a city parade, because our city is desperate for fun. Our youth wants to see some more fun. When I asked, during my last week of high school, I went around through many of my fellow and graduate seniors and juniors, asking them what do they want in the city, they all said the same thing. They want a parade, they want to celebrate Federal Way. And I said, yeah, I also want a parade, because I do want some steps in myself too. So I would please encourage the city council and the mayor to work in the parade, have other commissions involved as well. So my last twenty-six seconds, as a commissioner, as chairman, let us continue to invest in our youth, for they are not just the leaders of tomorrow, but the vibrant heart of Federal Way today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Juan, thank you to all our commissioners. We'll have a brief reception before we start our executive session. We will, then we'll go, what I would say is, council members, what I would say is, if you could start making your way over there about ten minutes to six, and then no later than five minutes to six, we'll be breaking. And before I announce the RCWs for executive session, council president?
I just want to, in looking at everyone here today, kind of the senior center folks have, we need T-shirts for everybody.
Yeah.
Can you come up with that?
Done, let's do it. All right, so what we do, oh, I also want to say, before we go any further, I love that idea, love T-shirts, you know, really for everybody, I want to say it's very special thanks to Pam Jones, my executive assistant who got cake for everybody. Thank you, Pam. And for Amy Gladden, the assistant to the council who helps out and whose birthday it happens to be today. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
It's actually tomorrow, so double celebration, all right. Hey, you guys.
Hey, mayor?
Could we get a picture of everyone?
Yeah, yeah, let's, right after we break, let's break because we're going to do the reception. So we want to have everybody come up here for a picture, but before we do this.
One last question. Is there any way we can have a special meeting on discussing having people from the PAA area part of our commission? We have this regulation where we can have people in the PAA area as part of our commission, but I think they're part of us, and they need to think of that, and I think we should start discussing that.
You bet. And the council president's referring to the potential annexation areas east of Military Road, sort of about where the area that Thomas Jefferson High School is at. Brian, can you tee that up for discussion and follow-up? And we want to say thank you once again for all of your comments. We will be breaking for executive session for approximately twenty-five minutes at about the five minutes to six mark, and we'll get started. Collective bargaining pursuant to RCW 4230-1404B and pending potential litigation pursuant to RCW 4230-111I, and again, approximately twenty-five minutes. And with that, we are in recess for that purpose and for cake. That's official. Everybody, please come forward for a picture.